I read being six thirty one, we'll call the common council meeting to order, please stand.
When the United States of America enters the Republic for which it stands, one nation under invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm sorry, taken? Thank you. Moving into adoption of the agenda.
So moved, your honor.
That made second. Any additions or corrections?
Take the note, uh, under economic development committee number E three should be removed.
So noted.
Second.
Motion made and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried by all. Approval of January twenty one, twenty twenty five common council meeting minutes.
Move to approve the January twenty first minutes, your honor.
Motion made by Mr. Crochet. Second by Mr. Dorsey. Any further discussion, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carried by all as well. Mr. Dorsey, authorization to pay the bills.
Sure, I make a motion for the authorization to pay the bills in the amount of one million, three hundred four thousand, one hundred sixty dollars and fifty cents.
Motion made by Mr. Dorsey.
Second.
Second by Mr. Crochet. Any additions or corrections to those? Please cast your ballots. Mr. Dorsey.
She already did it, she did it in the chat.
All right, next we'll move on to the public hearing for levy and special assessments against all benefited, all property owners on Ashgaw Street from Wolf River Ave to Pershing Street. Will be six thirty three, we'll call this public hearing open. If you'd like to speak, please come to the front, name and address, please, and please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Any public comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. All right, move right along, now we can open up public comments. Anybody that's wishing to speak, please come to the front so that you can, we can capture you on the microphone, please state your name and keep your comments to three minutes or less, please.
Well, I guess I'll go first. Well, first of all, I, um, I'd like to thank everyone, um, for this invitation. Uh, I, um, found out about the meeting and, and I wanted to come in. Some of you may know me, some of you may not know me, um, I'm Pat Tony, I'm running for school board for the New London School District. Um, I've lived in New London for forty-four plus years, our family was raised here. Um, I have been involved with some very, very many different organizations. Um, previous school board of Most Precious Blood, being on the, um, board for the Mission of Hope organization, involved in various, um, different organizations, Appleton District Nursing, um, the Counseling Association. I can, really am committed to giving back, and I think that's the reason why I'm running for school board, I just feel really, um, committed to make a difference. Um, um, for all of us that are retired, you get busier when you retire, I say, and I think that's really true, um, for this. I feel that New London is my home, and I think as a family member of a home, you, you want to give back and you want to do something to do that. Um, I believe that our school certainly helps with all the academic achievement, um, the citizenship, the social skills, all of those things. Um, I have two grown children, five grandchildren, two great grandchildren, and I guess I just really believe that all children are entitled to a good education, we have that in New London, I want to continue that. Um, my career as a registered nurse, as a, a school counselor, former school counselor and a licensed professional counselor, I really think has given me the opportunity to see the multiple different reasons why there are difficulties sometimes with children and youth, and I think our school district can be a hub as to how we're going to address many of those issues. Um, whether our students will go right into a workforce, the military, a technical college, four-year college, whether they're going into the workforce, or maybe their own entrepreneurship, I want all children to feel that they have given something back to their community, that they have been, um, really have reached their full potential, and I think that's regardless of their culture, their background, their, you know, color, their nationality, their identity, all students, all students, youth and children need to be, feel their worth and feel that they have given something. So when children and youth look back at our district, you know, I want them to really feel that they have achieved something, and I think it's because of our community and our school district, I want to be a part of that, I, I really do. I think the parental input and our teacher input is vital for that relationship, and, um, the city, certainly all of this working together, thrilled to hear about the grant writer that will be working with the city and the school and the chamber, I think that relationship is a huge part of it. And so I, I do believe in the unique abilities of every student, and that's going to look different, all children deserve success, I believe in teamwork, because if you have one idea and I have one idea, we both have one idea, but if we can share it, we have two ideas each, and pretty soon as a whole committee or organization, we have many of them. So I'm Pat Tony, I want to represent, um, New London as one of the school board members, and I, um, certainly ask for your vote on April first. Um, there will be some forums coming up with, um, the candidates, um, introducing themselves. I do have a flyer that I will give to you as a city council and leave the rest here, but I thank you for the opportunity to at least introduce myself, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Any further public comments?
Good evening. My name is Holly Schleitzer, I think I've met most of you before. Um, I am an incumbent, I'm, I'm running for my second term on, on the school board. I, um, am a mom of five, me and my, uh, husband have three kids still in the new one in school district, so I definitely have skin in the game. Um, the reason I ran was because I ran during COVID, you know? I ran as a frustrated parent, and I, there was nothing more frustrating to me than getting up in front of that board and feeling like I didn't have a voice. Stepped out from behind that podium and I ran. Um, one thing that I ran on was transparency, and I wanted to feel like when I came back to that next meeting, if I had questions or concerns or just wanted to be heard, that I could be heard, but I couldn't be, I had to wait until the following month for that, that regular school, school board meeting to address anything. Um, so that's one thing that, that was changed on the board that I'm proud of. Um, parents and, um, city, anyone, anyone can go for public forum and, and all meetings are special or regular and committee meetings, so you are able to give input at every meeting. Um, I, when I ran, I, I really pushed for adding a day restriction to the FFA for us, keeping it, you know, in the school and a part of the FFA, we didn't, we don't want to sell that off, that is so special, that was, you know, um, and we were able to get that done, that I'm, I'm very proud of. Um, I am a huge supporter of supporting our female athletes, I've said that from day one, and I, that's something that I will not back down on. Um, our females deserve a, a, a fair chance, it's hard enough, they put the blood, sweat and tears in it against other females, and we don't, don't need a bio male beating them out, and I, I will stand firm on that, yes, for the next four years, we're probably safe, but that could change. So, um, I, I'm proud that we spent Esser funds wisely on stuff that was not a reoccurring expense, it's something that was a one-time deal. Um, and, you know, I, I always think of the taxpayer, the almighty dollar, the people in our community, um, how is their money being spent, I want to be responsible that way, and, um, that's something that I'm, I'm proud of, I, I'm looking forward hopefully to a second term, and, um, I would like to have your vote, but that's where I stand, I'm a mom, I'm a mom with kids in the district, and I want to do what's best for our kids, not just my kids, my kids' friends, my, we're going to be grandparents, and so we now, we got grandbabies coming in, so, um, do what's best for our kiddos. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Hello. Thank you for the time, I'm Andy Thorpe, I'm also running for school board this year. Um, I'm, uh, all but two years lived in New London my whole life, I just love the community, the small town atmosphere of it. Um, I serve at Victory Church Wednesday nights with the children's ministry, and I'm just getting involved more so now that my kids are coming of age, I just coached my son's T-ball team this past year, he's six, who's Micah, he's in Lincoln Elementary, that's a big driving factor of why I'm running for school board, I, I do believe that parents should have voice in all, all things school, whether it's sports, curriculum, everything. I'm, I'm with Holly when, when she says protecting girls' sports, I would take it further to bathrooms and locker rooms, I work at Amcor and Ashgosh, and they don't have that policy there, and it just creates an uncomfortably weird. I don't, it's just different when you have males going into women's locker rooms, and I just can't, can't imagine being a, a dad of girls and having that in school. Um, I'd also look to try to bolster the tech ed department in, in the high school level, just because I feel like we need more trade workers. A lot, a lot of your four-year college edu- educated kids that are coming out, that I especially see at Amcor, aren't able to even use their, use their degrees for much, and they find themselves working shift work, where tech ed would drive you towards a trade and get you into a higher paying job. Um, yeah, I'm just really trying to advocate for parents and do what's best for kids in general, and also support the teachers, because I know that New London is one of the higher paying districts in relation to surrounding schools, and I'd like to keep it that way as far as retaining our good teachers that we have in New London. Um, thank you for your time, and we greatly appreciate your vote on April first.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Any further public comment? All right, hearing none, we will move along. Next on the agenda is standing with special committees, we'll start off the board of public works, Mr. House.
Thank you, your honor. Board of Public Works met Monday, February third, two thousand twenty-five, meeting was called to order at five fifteen. Motion was made to approve the agenda, carried by all, there was no public input. Waste water treatment, treatment plan updates, waste water notes enclosed for the packet. Next is mid-state concrete asphalt crushing and removal agreement. An agreement was presented for crushing and removal of concrete and asphalt that is located at seven forty River Road. Removal of the old debris will allow for space to be utilized by the city. This would be at no cost to the city and mid-state would haul and take possession of the crushed material for their use. A motion was made in second to approve the agreement, motion was carried by all. Approve and adopt engineers report and Ashgaw Street plans. Director Garsky read through the entire engineer's report, the report covers estimates of assessment and the difference between public and private portions of the, of the sanitary lateral. The reports list all properties on Ashgaw Street between Wolf River Avenue and Pershing Street, even if the lateral, property lateral runs to a side street. It will be determined on site if those laterals fall within the project limits. The Ashgaw Street plans reviewed with only a small change from the submitted plans, there was an erroring of Washington Street intersection. Motion was made in second to approve and adopt engineers report and Ashgaw Street plans, motion was carried eight to zero. Proven recommend to council final assessment resolution for sanitary and water lateral constructions on Ashgaw Street. Director Garsky presented to the committee the final resolution for authorizing improvements and levy and special assessments against a benefited properties for sanitary and water lateral rehabilitation. The resolution includes payment plan for the assessment for ten years at one percent. Motion made in second to approve and recommend to council the final assessment resolution for sanitary and water lateral constructions for Ashgaw Street, motion was carried eight to zero. Next, approve and recommend to council award to PTS contractors in the amount of four million, two hundred and one thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars for the Ashgaw Street reconstruction. The bid tab was presented for the Ashgaw Street project, eight contractors bid on the project with PTS being low bid. Board member Haas asked the question about having to accept low bid. City Administrator Hertz explained that this is a state statute to accept the lowest bid from a qualified contractor. Or motion made in second to recommend to council the award to contractor PTS in the amount of four million, two hundred and one thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars for the Ashgaw Street reconstruction, motion was carried eight to zero. Authorize the director of public works to approve change orders in total collective amount up to a hundred thousand dollars for the Ashgaw Street reconstruction. Director Garsky requested authority to approve change orders that may arise related to the Ashgaw Street project collectively up to a hundred thousand dollars. This would allow the project to proceed forward without any delay. He will keep the board updated, up to date with any change orders that were issued. Motion made and was seconded to authorize director of public works to approve change orders in the total collective amount of up to a hundred thousand dollars for the Ashgaw Street reconstruction project, motion carried eight to zero. Next, approve and recommend to council McMahon agreement for construction services for Ashgaw Street. Director Garsky presented to the committee with the agreement with McMahon noting the scope of their services, special terms, compensation and completion schedule. Motion was made in second to recommend to council to approve McMahon agreement for construction services for the Ashgaw Street project, motion was carried eight to zero. Next was proven recommend to council brush and yard waste agreement with the town of Muckwa. The board reviewed the expense sheet for the yard waste site, the agreement was discussed between, between the city of New London and the town of Muckwa for use of the brush and yard waste drop site, drop-off site. The contract will commence on January first, two thousand twenty-five and terminate December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. Monthly fee in amount of seven hundred dollars will be collected for the township fee, and the residents will be required to purchase a keypad and their annual sticker for access to the site. Motion was made in second to recommend approve to council the brush and yard site agreement with the town of Muckwa, carried eight to zero. Next, approve and recommend to council brush and yard waste site agreement with the town of Caledonia. The board reviewed the agreement for the town of Caledonia, based on their fee, it would be a two hundred, based on use for their fee will be a two hundred dollar a month agreement that would last until December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. Caledonia residents would be required to follow the same rules as the resident, residents and Muckwa. Motion was made in second to recommend to council brush and yard waste agreement with the town of Caledonia, motion carried eight to zero. Directors report, the directors report was included in the package and reviewed by the board, there was no anniversaries. Future gen items, citywide contracted garbage collection, the date and time for the next meeting for public works will be Monday, March third, two thousand twenty-five at five fifteen. Being a further discussion, motion made in second to adjourn at six twenty-nine. I'd like to make a motion to consider agreement, approval for agreement with mid-state asphalt LLC for concrete crushing and removal.
Motion made by Mr. Pass. Second by Mr. Berryton. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please cast your ballots. Motion carried eight, zero, thank you for your patience.
Next, I'd like to consider approval, make a motion to consider approval for the final assessment resolution for Ashgaw Street sanitary and water lateral construction.
Motion made by Mr. Haas. Second by Mr. Dorsey. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballot.
Next, I'd like to make a motion, consider approval of the contract award to PTS INC in the amount of four million, two hundred and one thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars for the Ashgaw Street reconstruction.
Motion made by Mr. Haas, second by Mr. Berryton, any further discussion? Hearing none, please cast your ballots. That motion's carried eight, zero as well.
Next, I'd like to make a motion, considered, authorized in the director of public works to approve change orders in a total collective amount of up to a hundred thousand dollars for the Ashgaw Street reconstruction.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Haas, second by Ms. McGowsky. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. The motion carried eight, zero.
Like to make a motion, consider approval of a man agreement for Ashgaw Street construction services.
Motion made by Mr. Haas.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dorsey. Please cast your ballots. That motion's carried eight, zero.
Next, I'd like to make a motion, consider approval of the yard waste site agreement with the town of Muckwa.
Second, motion made by Mr. Haas, second by Mr. Berryton. All right, now you cast your ballots. The motion's carried eight, zero.
I'd like to make a motion, consider approval of the yard waste site agreement with the town of Caledonia.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Haas, second by Ms. McGowsky. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. That motion's carried eight, zero as well.
So I have, your honor.
Thank you, Mr. Haas. Finance and personnel, Mr. Dorsey.
Yes, your honor. Finance personnel committee met Wednesday, February fifth. Meeting was called to order at five fifteen, motion was made in second to approve the January eight, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes. Motion was made in second to recommend to council approval of the memorandum of intent of understanding between the city of New London, London area Chamber of Commerce and the school district of New London. The purpose of the MOI is to establish collaborative agreement among the city, the chamber and the school district to hire grant writers who will support grant seeking efforts benefiting all three entities. Grant writer will be employed by the chamber with financial contributions from each entity to fund the position. Motion was second made, excuse me, motion was made in second to recommend to council approval of the library resolution. The purpose of the resolution is to delegate authority to the London Library and Museum Board for the construction contract administration of the new library project. Commissioner Hertz presented the information he received on similar tower leases, many of leases are with private organization, therefore information is not public. One of the, one of the communities did respond, the contract was comparable or in line with those leases. Mr. Hertz was currently waiting on responses from the lease tower company for comment on a possible increase in the lease and report back at the March fifth meeting. Motion was made in second to recommend to council approval of the hiring wage scale adjustment of two percent, purposely adjustment is keep the city competitive when hiring or promoting for a position. Financial director had key review the twenty twenty-four year-end unaudited revenue expenditures signed and unassigned fund balance and the wheel tax reports. Actual twenty twenty-four expenditures were less than budgeted and revenue was higher than the budget, allowing the city, city to designate funds and add to the unassigned fund balance. Motion was made in second to recommend to council additional three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to the capital fund, one hundred thousand dollars to health insurance fund, and fifty thousand dollars to economic, economic development. Motion was made in second to recommend to council approval of the resolution assigning fund balance for year end twenty twenty-four. Motion was made in second to recommend to council a resolution amending twenty twenty-four budget, budget. Resolution authorizes movement of funds between categories with no increase in the total for the twenty twenty-four budget. Finance directors report was discussed. You know, very, very business, we adjourned at six thirteen. The next finance and personnel committee meeting held here at, on March fifth at five fifteen. Make a motion to consider the approval of the monthly license list. Second.
Motion made in second?
Yes, but the second.
Miss Harris? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Make a motion to consider an approval of the resolution assigning fund balance for the year end twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Motion made, second by Mr. Crochet. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please cast your ballots. That motion's carried eight, zero.
A motion to consider approval of the resolution amending the twenty twenty-four budget?
Motion made by Mr. Dorsey. Second by Mr. Berryton. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please cast your ballots. That motion is also carried eight, zero.
Do motion for to consider approval of a memorandum of intent between the city of New London, the London area Chamber of Commerce and the school district of New London.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Dorsey, second by Mr. Beesaw. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please cast your ballots. That motion's carried eight, zero.
Motion considering approval of a resolution delegating authority to the New London Public Library to Museum Board for the construction contract administration of the library project.
Motion made by Mr. Dorsey.
Second.
Second by Mr. Haas. Any further discussion? Please cast your votes. That motion's carried eight, zero as well.
Motion to consider approval of the hiring wage scale adjustment of two percent. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Dorsey, second by Mr. Crochet. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please cast your ballots. That motion's carried eight, zero.
That is all I have, your honor.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey. Up next on the agenda is park and recreation, Mr. Beesaw.
Thank you, your honor. Park and rec committee met on Tuesday, February fourth, meeting was called order at five fifteen. After the pledge, the motion is made second to approve the agenda, motion carried thirteen oh. Approve the meeting minutes of November fourth was approved thirteen oh. Public input, there was none. Consider approval agreement with East Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission, ECWRPC for the five-year comprehensive outdoor recreation plan. Director Saul induced Joe Steppenson and Garvin Ebert, ECWRPC, to review their role in creating comprehensive outdoor recreation plan. This included timeline responsibilities and actions taken to get community involvement to create a comprehensive plan for the city of New London. Motion was made in second, consider approval of the ECWRPC for the five-year comprehensive outdoor recreation plan, motion was carried thirteen oh. Consider approval agreement with Blue Stem Forestry for tree inventory. Director Saul brought to committee the agreement with Blue Stem for tree inventory for the city. This is partially covered by the urban forestry grant. This will also assist in setting up the inventory in the GIS system for better keeping track of planting, trimming, removal of trees. Motion was made in second to approve the recommendation to council the agreement, the Blue Stem Forestry for tree inventory, motion is carried thirteen oh. Discussion of action on ash tree disposal policy, Director Saul presented to committee a policy for exposing the influx of ash wood by offering it up to the public in a sealed bid. a policy for exposing the influx of ash wood by offering it up to the public in a sealed bid process. The lots would be in various sizes for very use by bidders. Motion was made and seconded to approve the action of the ash tree disposal policy, motion carried thirteen oh. Director's report was included in the agenda pack and reviewed by the committee. Additional comments noted as follows. Twenty twenty-four annual report given, the London Aquatic Fitness Center has received notice that Silver Sneakers will not be continuing their insurance reimbursement program. This will affect approximately seventy memberships. Jim Thorpe, Aquatic Supervisor, will continue to communicate with the membership users with any updates. The chairman's report, there was none, future agenda items for none. The next Park and Rec meeting will be on Tuesday, March fourth at five fifteen. There being no further discussion, motion was made to adjourn, motion, meeting was adjourned at six twelve. I would recommend approving the council agreement to East Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission, ECWRPC for the five-year comprehensive outdoor recreation plan.
Motion made by Mr. Bissaw.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dorsey. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please cast your ballots.
I would also.
That motion's carried eight zero.
I would also make the motion to approve an agreement with the Blue Stem Forestry for Tree Inventory.
Motion made by Mr. Bissaw.
Second.
Second by Ms. Mikowski. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please cast your ballots. That motion's carried eight zero as well.
I would look for, look for approval of the ash tree disposal policy.
Motion made by Mr. Bissaw, second by Mr. Barrington. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please cast your ballots. That motion's carried eight zero as well.
I'd also look for approval of the ordinance amending the City of New London's code to permit animals at special events, the second reading.
Motion made by Mr. Bissaw.
Second.
Second by Mr. Fache. Any further comment? Yes, Ms. Barrington.
I still disagree. I don't believe the dog should be allowed at some events, especially fireworks.
Thank you, Mr. Barrington. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, please cast your ballots. That motion's carried seven yes, one no.
That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Bissaw. All right, move along, Planning Commission, I'll take the minutes on those, Mr. Ritchie is on vacation. The, uh, Planning Commission meeting. The meeting was called to order by Chairman Bernie Ritchie at five fifteen PM. A motion was made by Stein Grabber to adopt the agenda and seconded by Gabbard, the motion carried unanimously. The December twelfth, twenty twenty-four meeting minutes were reviewed, a motion was made by Bassett to accept the minutes and seconded by Stan Grabber. The motion carried unanimously. The owner of Blossom and Bloom Greenhouse provided a conceptual plan that would allow him to expand his business. In order for this to happen, the zoning designation of R two that currently regulates the use of the property would need council approval. The use is currently non-conforming. A zoning change would also trigger an amendment to the zoning map currently in place. Before moving ahead with the process, he was checking to see, he was checking to make sure that the, there wouldn't be a lot of negative pushback from members of the Planning Commission or other attendees on council. He was made aware that no approval was given during the meeting and moving forward, he would be doing so at his own risk. He will be seeking in future meetings, the changes in ordinances to allow for the expansion. The next item on the agenda was another presentation from Vandewall and Associates for part one of the zoning code rewrite process. Ben Rohr took lead with the discussion and asked for feedback on several key components of the plan. Several members present discussed issues shared from Vandewall and Associates. Upcoming agenda items were discussed, a motion was made to adjourn by Troy Herter, seconded by Hanski, carried by all. Meeting adjourned by Chairman Ritchie at approximately six forty-three PM. That is all for Planning Commission. Economic Development, Mr. Dorsey.
Economic Development, meeting met Tuesday, January twenty-eighth at five fifteen. Minutes from December tenth were reviewed, motion was made to approve the minutes. There was no public comment. Committee reviewed the twenty twenty-four downtown facade improvement, facade improvement pro, grant program to consider its renewal for twenty twenty-five. Or provided statistics on the number of grants awarded and the total funding in twenty twenty-four. Several aspects of the program were discussed, including funding amounts, eligibility, or follow-up years and qualifying activities. Motion is made to renew the downtown facade improvement grant program for twenty twenty-five, allocating forty thousand dollars from the economic development assigned fund balance. Motion included the removal of the five-year waiting period for grant recipients while prioritizing first-time applicants, motion carried. The committee discussed the potential of advertising strategies, strategies for the city's Highway forty-five billboard for the next three to five years. Ideas included promoting development with the Northeast Business Center, advertising the updated downtown district, encouraging, encouraging people to live in London. No decisions are made and the committee will revisit discussion in the near future. Or presented options for advertising on Highway fifteen digital billboard in Greenville, similar to the city's initiative in twenty twenty-four. Proposal aimed with coordinating with local partners for bulk purchasing to reduce advertising cost. Several messaging ideas were considered, including aligning ads with the city's Highway forty-five billboard campaign. Motion is made to authorize staff to collaborate with local organizations to purchase bulk ad space on Highway fifteen digital billboard in Greenville, using funds from the economic development assigned fund balance. The ad campaign will run from March third to April twentieth. Chamber Director's report. A new Mexican-based grocery store called Nito Max is opening March first at twelve hundred North Shallow Street. I'm gonna kill this name. Curio, La Cano, Mexican restaurant at two fourteen North Water Street is renovating their interior. Taco Bell at twelve eighty North Shallow Street has renewed their lease and are planning some renovations in twenty twenty-five. Mayor Price Financial at five ten West North Water Street has closed due to retirement. Value Real Estate by Jeffrey is sponsoring Chamber Business After Hours Networking Event for February sixth. Not too many changes for commercial listings, except the city and chamber has been notified that the owners of Wolf River Plaza will be reducing their sale price in the near future. City Administrator's report. Or reported that some updates regarding the potential future hotel feasibility study. The committee reviewed potential topics for future discussion, the next Economic Development Committee meeting is scheduled for February twenty-fifth. Committee went into closed session, there is nothing to report from closed session. Meeting was adjourned at six fifty-five. Look, uh, consider the renewal of the downtown facade, facade improvement grant program for twenty twenty-five, allocating forty thousand dollars from the economic development fund assigned balance.
Motion made by Mr. Dorsey.
Second.
Second by Mr. Has. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please cast your ballots. That motion's carried seven yes, with one extension.
That is all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey. Capital Projects and Equ equipments Committee, Mr. Has.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, Capital Projects and Committee, Equipment Committee met February fifth at two thousand, at six fifteen. Minutes and reports distributed in a package. I'd like to make a motion, consider approval of the replacement of the two thousand fourteen plow truck for the Public Works Department, estimated cost three hundred thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion made, second by Mr. Bissaw. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please cast your ballots. That motion's carried eight zero.
Like to make a motion, consider approval of the replacement of the copier at the pool, estimated cost two thousand four hundred dollars.
Motion made by Mr. Has. Second by Mr. Barrington. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please cast your ballots. That motion's also carried eight zero.
Like to make a motion, consider approval of street and sidewalk program for a hundred thousand dollars.
That motion's made. Second by Mr. Fache. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please cast your ballots. That motion's carried eight zero.
Like to make a motion, consider approval of the PD retaining wall, estimated cost thirty-five thousand dollars.
That motion made by Mr. Has. Second by Ms. Mikowski. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please cast your ballots. That motion's carried eight zero.
Next, I'd like to consider approval of the roof assessment at City Hall, Library slash Museum, Senior Center, and Police Department, estimated cost five thousand five hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
Motion made by Miss Ha, Mr. Has.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dorsey. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please cast your ballots. That motion's carried eight zero.
Next, I'd like to make a motion, consider approval of camera upgrades at the Aquatic and Fitness Center, estimated cost three thousand fifteen dollars.
Motion made by Mr. Has.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bissaw. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please cast your ballots. That motion's carried eight zero.
Like to make a motion, consider approval of the fitness room cardio equipment, estimated cost eight thousand one hundred.
That motion made by Mr. Has.
Second.
Second by Mr. Fache. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please cast your ballots. That motion's carried eight zero.
Next, like to make a motion, consider approval of the Pfeiffer bleacher upgrades, estimated cost twenty thousand dollars.
Motion made by Mr. Has.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bissaw. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. That motion's carried eight zero.
Like to make a motion, consider approval of the remote tablets, covers, keyboard for new time and attendance system, estimated cost four thousand eight hundred and thirteen dollars.
Motion made by Mr. Has.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barrington. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please cast your ballots. That motion's carried eight zero.
Like to make a motion, consider approval of the digital sign rewrap at the library museum, estimated cost three thousand two hundred dollars.
Motion made by Mr. Has.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bissaw. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please cast your ballots. That motion's carried eight zero.
That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Has. Minutes and reports distributed will stand as read in your packets. Moving right along to reports of officers on recent events and announcements to the public. Starting off with the mayor, I do not have any this month besides thanking all of our anniversaries that we have. Uh, next on the agenda is Chris Ryerson.
Um, after yesterday's election is behind us, um, you heard mention of the April first election, so I just wanted to highlight some deadlines coming up for that. March eleventh is the deadline for the clerk's office to send out absentee ballots for anyone with a request on file. Um, so look for those in the mail if you have an absentee ballot request. Um, and as always, we'll be offering early in-person voting, um, during our normal office hours from March eighteenth to March twenty-eighth. Um, our normal business hours are seven thirty to four thirty, Monday through Thursdays, and on Fridays, we're here seven thirty to eleven thirty. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ryerson. City Administrator, Mr. Hertz.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, just two quick things. Number one, um, tonight the council did pass the two thousand twenty-five facade grant program, so I want to let everybody know that, um, I will be updating that on the city's website in the next couple of days, but if there are any downtown businesses that are interested in that, the initial grant application is going to be due Friday, March twenty-eighth, so if you're looking for a project for twenty twenty-five, I would recommend, uh, getting an application in by the end of March. If you have any questions, I'd be more help, happy to help you out. Um, it's a four thousand dollar matching grant program, so if you spend four thousand dollars, um, of your money, the city would match four thousand, so a total of eight thousand dollars spent. New for twenty twenty-five, like you may have noticed in the motion, the city has eliminated the five-year waiting period for the grant applications. So in the past, if you were awarded a grant, you had to wait five years before you were eligible for the next round. Um, the council, um, did vote to remove that, so if you were awarded a grant last year, uh, you are eligible again, so definitely, uh, take advantage of that. If after the first round of applications are done and there's leftover money, it'll be a first come, first served scenario after that, so, um, if you have any questions on that, let me know, I'd be happy to help you out. And then I want to recognize Dave Vincent for four years of service as our building inspector on February first. And that's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Hertz. Chief of Police, Mr. Schlader.
Thank you, Your Honor. A couple of anniversaries, Anna Bitner, one year, Nick Campbell, fifteen years, Ron Srecky, ten years, Lisa Taylor, fifteen years. And I just completed twenty-nine years, and for the people that haven't heard yet, I have decided to retire from law enforcement after twenty-nine years, fifteen and a half years serving the citizens as chief of police. It's been the honor of my lifetime, and I'd like to thank you for all your support, letting you know that we have a great foundation built at the police department, and we've got some good young talent coming up, and I think you'll be in good hands in the future, so. Thank you so much, everyone. It's just been, it's been great working here. Can't imagine we're doing anything else for most of my career, but it's time to, I'm gonna try to start a second career here down the road, so we'll see how that works out, hopefully as successful as the first one. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, for your time and service. We all appreciate it. Director of Public Works, Mr. Garsky.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, Ashcroft Street Construction will start around the middle to late March, um, week before that work starts, you'll probably see some work going on in that intersection of Wolf River and Ashcroft Street, uh, that we'll be putting in a shallow well, start the pumping of groundwater to make installation of the sanitary main go a little smoother. Um, the project will be done in, uh, several phases. Uh, the first phase will be Wolf River to Washington Street, leaving Washington Street intersection open until school is out. Um, uh, there will be, uh, time when the work will occur in both phases as subcontractors work on the street reconstruction portion in the first phase, as the utility portion will be working in the second phase. Um, if everything goes well, uh, we're hoping that this construction should wrap up around the middle of October. So it's a long construction season for Ashcroft Street residents, I'd just like to say thank you for all of the residents that did show up or phoned in ahead of time before last Thursday's meeting. Um, we had a very big turnout for that public informational meeting. Everything was recorded and is now available on the city webpage, uh, right on the front page, there's a link you can click on to go get any information you need if you're a resident along that stretch. And that's all I have tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Garsky. Director of Park and Recreation, Ms. Saul.
Thank you, Your Honor. The hiking trails, sled hill, and ice rink are now open for full winter activity. The hiking trails, Sled Hill and Ice Creek are now open for full winter activities, the Sled Hill and Ice Creek are located at nine fifteen West Wolf, Wolf River Avenue, and the road around the backside of Hatton Park is prepared for winter hiking. And then also we have the leprechauns were on their way to find a pot of gold and got lost along the way, um, stopped down at some of our local facilities such as the office, the Aquatic and Fitness Center, the Senior Center, and the Washington Center Gym to pick up a clue card. Use that card to search out our local parks for more clues leading to our leprechauns. Once you find them all, bring your card back to the park and rec office for a chance to win a St. Patrick's Day prize. Um, this will be running February twenty-fourth through March twelfth. And that's all I have, your honor.
Thank you, Ms. Saul, it's like we have some leprechauns to find.
Yep.
All right, anybody have a report for fire department, I see chief or Mr. Ritchie are not here? All right, hearing none from them, we'll move right along to utilities manager, Mr. Bassett.
Thank you, your honor, uh, first water main break to report was last Friday on Millard and Manassas Street around nine A M, uh, crews made that repair, uh, at noon, uh, all service was restored. And then I'd like to thank, uh, Jackie Leva for eleven years of service with utilities. That's all I have this evening, thank you, your honor.
Thank you, Mr. Bassett. Next on the agenda is adjournment.
Make a motion adjourned.
Motion made by Mr. Roberts.
Second.
Second by Mr. Fache, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.